This evening, this is the May, what is it? I'm sorry, June 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. We do have a quorum tonight. I want to start out with the invocation by Dylan. Pledge allegiance by Mr. Jim Stee. Please rise.
The travels would continue after the meeting. Pray that you would all pray that you would continue. Amen.
The pledge. Please just.
Five. Nine. Seven. Six. Five. Four. Three. Two. One. Amen.
Okay, so we do have a quorum tonight. I need to get approval of minutes from the previous meeting, May 15th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from May 15th.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I need approval of the agenda this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda this evening.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission's a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on June 17th, 2025. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Nixon. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Nixon, to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Get into the debate agenda this evening. Unfinished business. Dylan?
Yes, sir. So this is the postponed item from May 15th, 2025 originally. Application for variances at 3900 Washington Road. There's the location of the property again, Washington Road at the Bobby Jones, the intersection with Bobby Jones Expressway, current vacant Walgreens. Zone C2, however, if you recall, the variance requests are all affiliated with the shared lot lines shown here with the R3 Single Family Residential zoning district on a couple adjacent lots. Then aerial of the site again, it was previously an operating Walgreens, now currently vacant and proposed for redevelopment by Parkers for a gas station. Plat for the property, shown here also is the access drive that we've previously discussed to Kareeb Drive, which is in fact on this. And if you remember, our discussion centered around the fact that we had an original application that requested elimination of several separation and buffer requirements affiliated with those shared lot lines with the Single Family Residential zoning district adjacent to this parcel. This is the original concept plan that they submitted. It's roughly about 35 feet of separation between the building and no additional buffer proposed, aside from an opaque fence that's already in place on the property that they were seeking to replace. Of other note, it's close proximity of parking spaces and dumpster pad, all very close to the residential lots that share a lot line with this development. We then progressed to a revised concept plan sent to us the day of that previous meeting on May 15th. They proposed additional landscaping along one of the lot lines. Some reduced parking and a altered location for the dumpster pad further away from those residential lot lines. Which brings us to a new concept plan that we've received in the interim between that meeting and today that was sent to us on May 28th. It again widens the proposed landscape buffer there along that lot line, as well as keeps the opaque fencing aspect of a structural buffer. They won't really be able to buffer there along that driveway that accesses Kareeb Drive without, you know, reducing that to one lane and causing probably traffic flow issues that maybe don't kind of match the benefit that would, we would have if we increased the buffer there. They have proposed, based on conversations they had back and forth with you guys and the public during the last meeting, added some clearance bars along that driveway, though, to try and ensure that any kind of commercial vehicles or tractor trailers won't be using that driveway and circumvent kind of traffic access by going through the residential neighborhood that's adjacent to this development. They've also again reduced parking along that's the nearest side of the building to that parcel, those residential parcels. They've also reduced the square footage of the building as well to again increase the separation. They're now up over 50 feet. They're about 54 feet from that lot line. That partnered with the increased landscape buffering helps and offers a middle ground solution. They've also reduced the size of the fuel canopy down from 10 pumps down to eight. It's a smaller canopy. It's also further away from that residential lot line, and they've kept the altered dumpster location further away from that residential lot line. Given that the buffer in place now against that residential, those residential parcels is simply an opaque fence with no landscaping, it's staff's opinion that this concept plan is a little bit more, again, a middle ground solution. It offers some benefit to the adjacent residents. And we've also included a couple of conditions to clarify that we're not granting a complete elimination of those separation requirements or buffer requirements, you know, for any further development on the site going forward. We are conditioning that deduction of those requirements is reflected here in the site plan, so they will be held to 16 feet of landscaping affiliated with that buffer and the 54 feet of separation affiliated with any structures that are a part of the operation of the gas station here on the site. Beyond that, we also have a condition that we're proposing that any lighting be shielded away from those residential lot lines and that a photometric plan is submitted along with their site plan. Given, provided those conditions are met, staff is comfortable in recommending approval with those conditions.
Okay, would the owner or applicant, Richard Stein, or Tiffany Jackson, would like to come forward and speak on behalf? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering Services, representing Parkers on this project. Y'all saw me last month with Daniel up here. I was prepared, I was prepared to tell you all the workings back and forth that we've had with the county and with staff here on this site, taking into consideration some of the concerns of residents at the last meeting, but Dylan just did that pretty much. I don't know what to add to that, really. So I would answer any questions you have. Reiterate that one of the concerns from commission and from residents was the trucks accessing in Kareeb Drive, because we're all clear that, you know, that, but as busy as the other two roads are, there will be traffic that'll use that Kareeb entrance, which I'm sure there is now as well. But we did add those two bars so that trucks coming from either direction would see and you won't have a traffic jam where you have a truck making it halfway down from, from one side of that entrance to the other and realizing they can't continue.
Okay, we have any questions? Thank you.
I do.
Would any other member of the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone that like to speak against? Come forward, please. Like to speak? Say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Kimberly Oats. I live at 3914 Castorosa. I was here last month, and I'm very concerned about this road that, and I appreciate the bars that they say they're going to put up, but when he spoke last time and y'all guys asked him, would you consider closing that road, the answer was no. And what that says to me is they are planning on making this neighborhood part of their exit strategy. Otherwise, they would have been willing to close that. It's going to be very difficult to get out of this and cut and turn left onto Washington Road. And so people are going to use these to cut through all the different roads to get to the other places. And we know that as a neighborhood because we've watched it happen with Walgreens, and we've watched it happen with Sherwin-Williams Paint. And so we know it's going to happen. The difference is that it's going to be much more traffic than there was those other two places and more commercial traffic. And even if it's not an 18-wheeler, there's lots of trucks, smaller trucks, but commercial trucks that are going to be using our neighborhood for their, their purposes. I don't have a problem with them having a gas station. They are making a profit, but I do have them, I do have a problem with them making a profit at the, at the, our, our property value expense, because people are, I wouldn't buy a house on, on my street now knowing that I've got, that's my phone, I'm sorry, I thought I had turned it off. My property value, I would not buy my house now based on the fact of what's going on with Parkers. And I just want to ask you to please put on the record again, can we at least make this a cul-de-sac where those businesses that are in front of that can access their businesses and that people, if they're coming out of that road, can turn, go to the, go to the right and get up on Washington Road, but not be able to turn and go left and come down into our neighborhood?
Do I have any questions? Thank you.
So what you're saying is when you, when you come out of the back road and turn to go up Kareeb Drive, you're saying right turn only?
Right, exactly.
Not a left turn?
Not a left turn. We put a cul-de-sac right there where they couldn't get through to turn left, then...
Yeah, because that's, with the turning lane going on Columbia Road, that's, that traffic backs up just about to there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have one question you probably could answer. You ain't got to come up here. How tall is the clearance bar?
Sweet voice on the record.
With thinking about the nine to 10-foot mark, kind of think about a drive-through lane if you're at a fast food restaurant. So one thing I did want to clarify on that last comment was that the intent is to block all commercial trucks outside of, you know, an F-250-style truck that'd be used for commercial purposes, but your commercial box trucks are also intended to be limited by these bars, not just 18-wheelers.
What is, what is your purpose for having that road?
Well, it's an existing road, really, and it just provides more access into the development. I think for all the same reasons that y'all have identified here, sometimes it could be hard to take a left out of this. I say sometimes, probably all the times it's hard to take a left on either.
On Washington Road, it's going to be very difficult. Scott, that's, is that a county deal? That wouldn't be their deal, right?
Yeah, so since the last meeting, I've had a chance to talk with the traffic engineering and the county engineer, talking about concerns of, you know, obviously intermingling the commercial traffic as well as into the residential area and, you know, options that might be available. One of the things that we did discuss, of course, was the idea, the concept of making that a cul-de-sac or dead-ending that at the depth of the commercial along Washington Road, and that really wasn't something that was viable option in the eyes of the county engineer. Just from the standpoint, it's, it's not just commercial on the commercial side, if you will, and residential on the residential side. There's public safety aspects that we also have to be keeping in consideration. There are, you know, obviously, we understand there is cut through traffic currently going on there. So, you know, those are things that we had to, you know, also keep in mind in making those decisions, but the county engineer did not see that as a viable option, but certainly...
See what she's saying.
Yeah, 100%, and we talked about that, and I don't think it's just, you know, you could pick any one of several streets on that neighborhood that have that same situation occurring and to, in essence, cul-de-sac, you know, or, or some sort of restriction on that or all of those or any and all of those streets, that neighborhood would be, you know, create some other unintended consequences perhaps. And so I think that's where the county engineer was less inclined to do something that, that restrictive, but, you know, they would certainly keep that in consideration as they're working through with GDOT, of course, on Washington Road improvements and like, so it's not something that we, you know, have an immediate solution to, but it's not something also that we're not aware of and mind as we work.
But this is, this is, Walgreens had the same problem.
Yeah, Walgreens.
Correct in understanding what she was saying.
Yep. Without the, without the vehicle restrictions, if you will, because there were no bars on that road.
That is an existing road. If that's what you're asking.
Yeah. It exists.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Elam, E-L-A-M, 4442 Oak Road. I'm speaking for my mother who could not be here tonight, Sylvia Pearson, at 205 Castle Linda Drive. My concern for this is a couple-fold. One, she lives across the street to Kids' Corner and is the next-door neighbor of Sherwin-Williams. So we have seen the property go from residential to professional, and it has slowly encroached onto her home. We had two neighbors that, next to her, that those homes are now gone, and it's the Sherwin- Williams parking lot. So she has woken every morning to the painters getting there at 6:00 in the morning, and the trucks unloading, and the trucks parked next to her, and the fence that fell during the storm, and I've emailed and called the county, and the fence is still laying down. Anyway, my concern with closing this road or having that access to the Walgreens is the fact that people will do what they do now and cut across whatever that little white store that was formerly the SNS store when I was growing up and to where Kids' Corner is and cut down Castle Linda. That's going to require Castle Linda to have speed bumps, and even Kareeb, part of that's going to need speed bumps. All of these businesses, I understand the need, as Kimberly said, and I understand and I encourage. Walgreens wasn't that bad because that was a neighborhood store that was used to obtain medicine for the neighborhood. It was really nice when they were open 24 hours a day because that saved my father several times. But now that it's going to be a gas station, and then I hear that the lighting is going to be reduced so it's not blaring, that's even better because my mother has called me several times. Granted, it's not as much as I was afraid of, of people back behind the Kids' Corner at night when they're closed, and that concerns me. And I have to tell her, well, if they're still there for in about 30 minutes, call the police and they'll just drive by and take a look at it. Well, that's a prompt care for children that that's happening at across the street from a Sherwin-Williams. What the heck's going to happen when you reduce the lighting behind a gas station? Everything going to be happy-go-lucky now? My concern is a lot of those people in that neighborhood are like my mother, geriatric. And to have, I encourage my mother to stay as independent as she can. I encourage all of them, but my safety of my mother, I think, is being compromised as slowly businesses start to encroach on this. And I am employed at Action Medical, and then by the front desk is a sign telling you how to get out through the neighborhood, because you can't get onto Washington Road. And you can get onto Bobby Jones, but that's it, unless you drive through Castle Linda subdivision to find a way out. So I do ask you to please consider this deeply for the residents that helped build this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question about the lighting? You said that you needed more lighting?
Well, they had to light first at Children's Corner, right into her room, so we had to ask them, and they said because they have a street light in the back, they could turn the spotlight off on the building. But if we've got decreased lighting in the back, there needs to be some form of lighting back there to ensure that people just don't hang around there.
I don't think this is a reduction in lighting. This is just light pollution onto the adjacent properties.
Yeah, I think this is more to shield it downward and so that it's not.
Right, as long as there's appropriate lighting to protect those neighbors back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the audience that like to speak in opposition? Hey, may I have a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend approval with the conditions filed VA 250502 on 3900 Washington Road.
Have a second? I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. New business? Will, massage operator's license.
Share us a request for a massage operator's license at Body Healing by Marie LLC. African is Ashley Parsons at 108 North Bella Road, Suite 7A. This is for on-premise only. These are all across the ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
I have body, body healing by Marie LLC. Member applicant would like to come forward and speak? Any member would like to speak against? Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Hamilton Grove, Section 1. Danielle?
Yes, so this is the preliminary plat for Hamilton Grove, Phase 1, off Hamilton Road. This shows the overall parcel. We'll see it again in a moment, but it is bounded to the north by Wrightsboro Road and to the south by Hamilton Road. And the portion we're dealing with is the portion at the southern end of the property fronting on Hamilton Road. This preliminary plat is to subdivide 17 residential lots with frontage on that existing road. And this does include extending water and sewer services to these properties. The minimum lot size is 19,860 square feet, which does exceed the requirements for the R2 zoning district. The required setbacks are 55 feet from the center line of the road and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, the owner applicant of Edgar Houston Builder Incorporated would like to come forward and speak on behalf?
Thank you all. Tyler Finley, Houston Homes, 6053 Veterans Parkway, Columbus, Georgia. Much like Dylan did earlier, can't really offer very much in addition to what Danielle's offered there, but I'm happy to answer any questions for you guys.
Y'all have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor?
Just to clarify, the preliminary plats are not public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're welcome to invite public, but you don't have to.
I apologize. I was carrying on, carrying on my business. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Hamilton Grove, Phase 1, off Hamilton Road.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Brooks, Phase 2. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for Phase 2 of the Brooks Townhouse Development off Columbia Road. This is the northern section of this property, and it is the final phase of this development. It was rezoned 2TR back in 2005. This section includes 20 new townhouse lots. They are generally in groups of three or more meeting code. The exception is the two down here at the south due to the environmental features here. Makes it kind of difficult for them to do three attached there. The two-attached pattern is not a defined use in the county code, but it is an existing development pattern in Phase 1 of this project and has been determined to be acceptable for them to continue that pattern with this section. This section also includes 1.2 acres of open space, including the required play area for the development, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Brooks Phase 2 off Columbia Road.
A second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Four Oaks, Phase 5, H2B3. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for Phase 5 of Four Oaks off Stable Bridgeway. This shows the location of the site off Hereford Farm Road, and we saw this not too long ago for some variance requests related to the buffer around this section of the development. And this section includes 16 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,230 square feet and an average lot size of 11,960 square feet, which meets the requirements of the R2 zoning district. Minimum setbacks are 55 feet from the center line and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines, and there is 2.67 acres of open space in this section, and sidewalks and street trees are to be provided on both sides of the road. They are complying with the variance conditions of both for the crossing of the extension of Stable Bridgeway across the golf course and with the 30-foot undisturbed buffer that was approved with the more recent variance, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Four Oaks Phase 5 off of Hereford Farm Road.
A second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing. Provisional home occupation.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation for Jeff Alexander's Home Improvements at 130 Pauline Street. This shows the location and the zoning of the property. It is off Lewisville Road, not far south of the intersection with Columbia Road, and is currently zoned RA, Residential Agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. The applicant is intending to operate a home improvement business and is using a portion of the existing shed on the property for storage of the tools related to that business. Obviously, storage of tools in a shed is a very typical use. If this was not a home business, we obviously wouldn't see this, but for the, the home occupation, to use that shed as part of the storage for the business does require a review and approval. Again, not an uncommon use. There's no customer traffic to the site or anything that should create any impacts on the adjacent properties, so there's no concerns with the proposed operation of this business, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. The applicant owner Jeffrey Alexander, if you would like to come forward and speak. A? Any member of the audience would like to speak against this? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Jeff Alexander's Home Improvements at 130 Pauline Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. RZ 25-0601, change of conditions. Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a change of conditions for a property off Hamilton Road and Wrightsboro Road. This property is currently zoned R2, Single Family Residential, but is undeveloped at this time, although we did just see the preliminary plat for Phase 1 of this project. This shows the location of the site again on the south side of Wrightsboro Road and the north side of Hamilton Road, right across from Baker Place, and it is currently zoned R2. It was rezoned in 2020 with several conditions. The pertinent one for this evening was added by the Board of Commissioners and requires a left turn lane on Wrightsboro Road into the subdivision for that, for their main entrance off Wrightsboro Road. Again, currently, the property is undeveloped. There is a concept plan to develop this as an R2 subdivision. Again, we just saw the preliminary plat for the first phase off Hamilton Road, so the left turn lane requirement is going to impact the next phases that are going to come in off of Wrightsboro Road, and the applicants are requesting to remove that condition, requiring the left turn lane, at least partly on the grounds that DOT is going to put a roundabout in at this intersection. You can see their entrance is designed to align with Baker Place Road, so it will effectively be the fourth leg of that intersection. DOT has confirmed they are planning to put a roundabout there, but they are at least three years out from doing that. The, the concern is that if the subdivision moves forward prior to the roundabout being in place, the existing traffic conditions that led to that condition being adopted will still be a concern. So what we are proposing, instead of removing the condition, is to modify it to essentially provide the option of either waiting for the roundabout to be in place or installing the left turn lane if the development wants to move forward before DOT completes their project. So staff is recommending approval with that modified condition that either the roundabout or the previously conditioned left turn lane must be installed prior to approval of the final plat for the first phase of the project that uses Wrightsboro Road for access.
Thank you, Danielle. Owner Jack Houston, Moxley, Durth, or applicant Tyler Finley would like to come forward and speak in behalf?
Thank you all. Tyler Finley, Houston Homes, 3 Veterans Parkway. I repeat that every time, but Danielle's point, you know, we don't know exactly our timeline for the following phases, so we're just asking that, you know, we be able to work with the county and GDOT. The left turn lane may not be something that we have to do, or it may be cumbersome if GDOT comes in, stalls a roundabout, you know, we'll work with everybody, control traffic and make sure we do what we need to do, whether that's the fourth leg or whether that's a turn lane, whatever time that changes.
So you're okay with the turn lane, putting the turn lane in, because usually GDOT's probably, they say three is five.
Fair enough. We work with them across the state, so yes, sir. You know, whichever works best for the county, but certainly however GDOT or the county wants to take care of that, we'll have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience that like to speak in favor? Anyone here would like to speak against? Anyone here would like to speak against this? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of condition of file RZ two-five dash oh six dash oh one, change of conditions to revise the condition for left turn lane on Wrightsboro Road for tax map oh five two parcel oh three seven.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Major S1 Special Revision?
Yes, sir, this is a planned revision to the S1 zoning, and the location is two eighty-five Flowing Wells Road on fifty point six two acres. And the existing use is a private school for Augusta Prep, and the request is to increase the wall height and signage. Here is the location map on Flowing Wells Road, you can see that it's a large parcel surrounded by basically residential. This is a zoning map showing the S1, the other two S1s close by are churches, and you've got the residential subdivision surrounding that. Here's a close-up of the aerial that shows the different buildings that are on the campus. And here's a plat of the property. The street views show where the entrance to the school is, it is a, there's a use of truffle light at the entrance and this widening work has been completed. So the school is proposing the rebuild of the entrance, they're going to reuse the existing metal gates. And the structures are going to be brick walls and brick piers in a quality design that matches a lot of the new buildings on the campus. And the site plans have been approved with the conditions. It does show the location of the wall and the columns, brick columns range from a height of six to thirteen feet. This is a view towards Flowing Wells Road, it does show that the entrance is approximately five to six feet below the road grade, so the impact of the additional height is not great on the public views. This is a close-up of the entrance plan that shows where the green line is where the existing chain link fence will be removed, replaced by the brick structures. The blue on the left is where the existing sign is and that will be removed as well. And the four markers in red will be the signs on the walls and the piers. The frontage on Flowing Wells Road does have some chain link fencing and that will be removed and replaced by the brick walls and piers. This is the sign on the left that's been removed, you can see the existing entrance there. The sign code actually allows a larger sign to what they have there already and what's proposed. It could essentially be about eighteen feet tall, it's not what they're requesting. The drawings show what the signage has been proposed. These are the entrance signage, there'll be four signs, the total area is about a hundred and thirty square feet, which is a lot less than what the sign code allows, and it's arranged symmetrically around the entrance. Staff doesn't have any major concerns with what's proposed and recommends to approve with the conditions. The wall height variance applies to finished masonry products only, as proposed in the plan provided with this application. The approved height does not apply to chain link fencing. And also we'll have an easement encroachment agreement prior to the approval for the fence and signs.
Thank you. Well, the owner of the Augusta Prep School, Augusta Prep School, or applicant's annual beard would like to come forward and speak on behalf?
Mark, thank you for welcoming me, county commissioners. I am Eric Hettinger, I am the owner of two eighty-five Flowing Wells, head of school. Are there questions that I can answer to what we have planned and strategized? This was envisioned once the Flowing Wells improvements were happening that we would take a step towards this. Questions to the stage?
Questions?
I like the looks of it.
Yes, it looks very nice.
Thanks, it took some other opinions to get here, so excited for it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor? Anyone would like to speak against this?
I just want to speak in favor, my name is Rich Rogers, forty-one twenty-one Fair Oaks Road. Our property actually borders the school and we ride by it every day. I think this demonstrates that they're, they care about their property and they're trying to be good neighbors and we appreciate that.
Very good, thank you. Any member of the audience would like to speak against this? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file RZ twenty-five oh six oh two, allowing the revision of the wall to twelve feet in height and additional signage for property at twenty-eight, twenty-eight, two eighty-five, excuse me, Flowing Wells Road.
A second.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. RZ twenty-five oh six oh three, bud revision, Dylan?
Sir, this is a request for a major planned unit development at Seven Ten Point Bluff Parkway. The request is for effectively a conditional use allowed in the commercial section of this planned unit development. This is the location of the parcel on the east side of Apling Harlem Code, it is part of the Greenpoint Planned Unit Development. Aerial of the site, this is a bit of a dated aerial since this photo's been taken, development has already begun on this property. Five suite multi-tenant commercial buildings on this parcel already. The proposed use is requesting to make use of one of the pre-existing suites in one of those two buildings. Again, the parcel is zoned as a part of the planned unit development for the Greenpoint overall mixed-use development. This side of the road, the adjacent parcels as well, all slated for some form of commercial development and commercial use. This request is based on the fact that even in commercial zoning, additional use, which means you have to go through this review process with public hearings to receive. Plat for the property. Again, this shows of the multi-tenant structure, which suite they're seeking to use. Code does allow for liquor stores to make use of a drive-through if applicable and a able, but as you could see from the site photos as well as the rendering of the development, there's not, given that they're using the central suite in that structure, there's not really that opportunity at the moment. I don't believe that there will be in the future, but just be aware. These are the renderings again of the structures that we already just saw. And liquor store, liquor stores are conditional uses that are also subject to additional conditions in the county code for separation requirements from variable other public uses, things like churches, public parks and things like that. Schools shown here is the separations that were surveyed as a part of the alcohol sales license that the applicants are seeking. Closest of these public uses is Harlem Middle School, which is over two thousand square feet, or two thousand feet away. Those separation requirements for everything except other liquor stores are just one thousand feet, they meet all of those requirements. The closest other liquor store that we'll see here on the next slide is more than five miles away. So again, this request satisfies all those distant separation requirements. And on the future development map, this is also within the mixed-use activity center, which does make allowance for commercial development. Again, everything from the zoning to the future lineup for development. This is allowed commercial use provided they receive conditional approval. And so that is why we're seeing the major request for this, and staff is comfortable with it and recommending approval.
Thank you Dylan. The owner, Greenpoint PCD LLC or applicant Krupa Patel would like to come forward and speak?
Good evening, my name is Krupa Patel, address is three zero three Clearwater Lane, Groton, Georgia. And thank you, I don't want to say anything.
Hey, do we have any questions?
I got one for Dylan, Dylan, you said something about the drive-through, most of them are supposed to have drive-throughs according to the county?
No, they're not, that's, the intent isn't that they're all supposed to, there just is an allowance in the code.
Okay.
But again, you can see that this building is already built out with no drive-through lane in sight, so we don't believe that this is a possibility with this development.
Okay.
Something we've mentioned with all the requests in the past, so housekeeping.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor? Anyone here would like to speak against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ two-five oh six oh three, major potter revision to allow liquor store at Seven Ten Point Bluff Parkway.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Major S1 Special Revision, Will?
Senator Sheriff's requests for a major S1 revision at thirty-four oh two Gordon Highway, currently used as a place to worship. The request is for a proposed fellowship hall and associated parking. She's location of the property on the south side of Gordon Highway, this is Fort Eisenhower over here and also, whoops. Maybe not, there you go, that's Fort Eisenhower over there and also Richmond County. And shows the current zoning of the site, and current zoning of S1, everything else is primarily RA, we do have another church over here as well. And again, aerial view of the site is from the hurricane aerials actually. And the site itself, and the plat of the property, it is technically three lots combined, but this is the old plat. So what they're looking to do, there's currently an existing sanctuary on the site, there is this building over here that is in the GDOT right of way. We're going to pretend it doesn't exist, it's fine to be there, but it's not really part of this, this whole discussion. The request is for this two thousand square foot fellowship hall over here, over here. And then also a proposed parking lot in the middle that will be paved for about approximately fifty parking spaces. And also you have the attention pond over here, they would then put in buffers as needed on the site itself, again, meeting our landscape requirements. Pretty straightforward request to be honest with you. In terms of the building itself, they will be submitting kind of what that's going to look like with the building permit for our review. Likely to be very similar to the fellowship hall itself. In terms of future land use, we're within the rural neighborhoods area but also along the employment corridor. Churches, as we talked about, can pretty much go where they please within Columbia County in regards to future land use. So it doesn't meet the intent of the future land use map. And taking all this into account, staff recommends approval of the request, that includes staff recommendation.
Thank you Will, well, the owner of the House of Mercy Ministries Corporation or applicant Mateen Robinson would like to come forward and speak?
I'm not Pastor Robinson, I'm Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering, I'm the project engineer on behalf of the church tonight. Forty-two ten Columbia Road, Martinez. And like Will said, this is pretty straightforward. Fortunately, the church is growing and they need some more space for a fellowship hall and they'd like to be able to build one on the property. An unusually shaped piece of property, so had to get a little bit creative, but I think we came up with something that makes sense. I had to answer questions you might have.
I have none, y'all have any questions?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other member would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here in opposition? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ two-five oh six oh four, major S1 revision to add a fellowship hall and parking lot to the property at thirty-four oh two Gordon Highway.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. We have RZ two-five oh six oh five, rezoning of S1 to R1. Danielle?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning of approximately one acre portion of the property at fifty-one sixty-four Mill Branch Road. This shows the location of the site at the corner of Mill Branch Road and Lewiston Road, just south of Columbia Road. It is currently zoned S1 as part of the existing church. But as you can see, there is an existing house on the property. The house actually predates the S1 zoning, but as we'll see, it's not really directly addressed under the S1. This is the existing site with the existing residence. And the intent of the rezoning is to retain this existing residential use, so there's no proposed change of use with this rezoning. This is the approved S1 plan from two thousand and thirteen, you can see the corner we're discussing has nothing planned on it. So this property basically is zoned S1 with no defined use. As I said, the mobile home predates the S1 zoning, but is not addressed under the S1, so it's in a bit of a limbo situation where it's zoned S1 with no approved use, so rezoning it would correct that. The intent is to subdivide this property off from the S1. So rezoning it to R1 gives it some lot standards to follow to make that subdivision possible. It also rezones it similarly to other residential properties around it. It will remain a non-conforming use under R1, we don't typically allow manufactured homes in that zoning district, but it is an existing residence. The houses on the adjacent properties are also manufactured homes, so it's still very much typical for the area. It is in the neighborhood's character area, this is primarily intended for single-family residential uses. The church as a civic use is also found there, but obviously this corner of the property is not being used as part of the church, it has been in residential use. And staff is recommending approval of the rezoning for this portion of the property.
Okay, thank you Danielle. The owner of Jam Ministries Incorporated or the applicant Barry Allen would like to come forward and speak?
Name's Barry Allen, but yeah, I mean, as far as what Danielle's spoken about is, we're just wanting to comply, we were actually looking at selling that property. The owner decided to back out. I think it's time to get maybe part of that.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other member likes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here in opposition? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ twenty-five oh six oh five, rezoning a portion of the property at fifty-one sixty-four Mill Branch Road to S, from S1 to R1.
A second.
I have a motion on the floor and second, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, file RZ two-five oh six oh six?
That's me again.
Danielle, go ahead, I'm trying to get back to my screen here, Danielle, go ahead.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning of two properties off Columbia Road from planned unit development to S1 special for a proposed solar farm. This shows the location of the two properties on the south side of Columbia Road, across from Patriots Park and Bartram Trail, kind of backing up to Ivy Falls and High Meadows. And the current zoning of the properties is planned unit development, we'll see the existing site plans in a moment, but they are currently zoned for a mix of townhouses and commercial and professional development. Currently, they are undeveloped, and there is an existing stream at the southern end of the site. Be there, the site is currently undeveloped. This is the approved development plan from the existing planned unit development zoning, so again, the kind of more southwestern property is zoned for townhomes. The northeastern parcel is zoned for a combination of commercial and professional development. So the applicants have submitted some technical documentation, including kind of a buildable area analysis. These properties do have some significant topography, that has been, made them a little more difficult to develop in the past. So this is kind of an illustration of that, and so we'll see with the site plan, they've left those areas that are more steeply sloped alone with their proposal. The plan is, or the proposal is to develop a solar farm on this property. They are showing building setbacks and buffers around the site, they're showing a minimum fifty-foot setback and a minimum twenty-five-foot buffer. Typically, we would recommend that those be larger, as far as county code is concerned, a solar farm is essentially a major utility. That's going to be the most similar thing in our code, which is an industrial use, so we typically would require larger buffers than that, particularly where it's adjacent to residential property. We would also, and have with previous solar farm applications, required larger setbacks from the road with the intent of kind of shielding it, screening it, making it less visible. So we do have some proposed conditions if this were to be recommended for approval, that would speak to those concerns with the setbacks and the buffers. The applicants have also submitted kind of the capacity maps, and again, these are kind of the technical side of why is, why are they proposing to put it here? So this shows the available hosting capacity that Georgia Power has to accept the power from this proposed solar farm. Georgia Power would be the entity purchasing that power from the site. In terms of future land use, this is in the neighborhood's character area, again, this area is intended primarily for single-family residential type development. And this area in particular is kind of developing and has quite a bit of residential development, and we're starting to see the commercial and the civic development out here with Patriots Park, with the fairgrounds, with the sports facility that's proposed next door. And this type of industrial use while sometimes does need to be And this type of industrial use, while sometimes does need to be in these neighborhood and character areas, we do have to have cell towers and some other industrial things near neighborhoods at times. Would be better placed not on a major road and not in this kind of densely developing area. So based on that, staff is recommending disapproval of this request.
Thank you. The owner of the GVS Holding LLC or applicant Bijan Solar LLC. Or anyone that's speaking in behalf would like to come forward and.
My name is GB Sharma. I've been a resident of Columbia County for the last 40 years. Have developed several pieces of commercial and residential property. Help the county create a big tax base. And I acquired this piece of property from Abrams Arata in the year 2007. And I've paid more than a million dollars only on interest on this property. And I have had several offers on it, but as Danielle said, given the topography of the property and the difficulty and the cost of developing it. All those contracts have not gone through. And therefore, I have also paid almost $10,000 to $13,000 a year in property taxes. I think with all the problems that we hear about global warming and about, you know, electricity, clean electricity or clean power. We who, us all well, we approve its uses and whatever precautions or whatever conditions the staff is making, I'll make sure that the solar farm people comply with that.
Do you have any questions?
I do. So you're saying that you've had this property since, you said, 2007?
Yes.
And so you, people have offered money to do something else, but it's probably not enough?
Well, it was originally approved in 2007 for 254 townhomes. And that did not work. Then I got it. At that time, the county refused to give me partial commercial zoning. When they agreed to give it to me, a partial commercial zoning, I partially rezoned it commercial and left part of it as residential. And I've had contracts from DR Horton Homes to any number of builders. Everyone looked at it and everyone said it's not cost-effective. And also, when I approached the DOT and got the driveway permits, given the frontage that it has, I think almost 1,100. I was asked to put XL diesel in and also three separate driveways, which killed this deal completely. So I would urge upon you that you approve this with whatever conditions you want to impose to protect the neighborhood and the community. But if you don't approve, I'm 79 years old. And I'm gonna pop off in a few years. I'm gonna leave it to my grandchildren and you'll not have any tax base or any development.
But did you, one more thing, did you get in touch with the solar company? Did they get in touch with you about this property? Because is it ideal for?
He will answer. He's present here. All technical questions, Mr. Warren Kritko would answer.
Okay.
He's present here.
Thank you. My name is Warren Kritko. I'm here to represent Bijan Solar.
So did you get in touch with him or he getting in touch with you? How'd it work?
Yeah, so Georgia Power, they put out an RFP, which is just a request for proposals here in the state of Georgia. They're wanting to put on new additional generation that is renewable based here in the state. And so what they do is they, they put that capacity map that you guys seen here, yes, this one. And basically, it shows where they have available lines, the three-phase power lines, and what capacity they can take. And those are basically the only places that you can interconnect with a solar farm. You're very limited. You know, it's either transmission level based where you're looking at, you know, the larger power poles that go through town or you're looking at the three-phase power lines like would run along a major road like Columbia Road. Those three-phase power lines will allow us to interconnect and ultimately energize the grid, bringing additional power here to the community and ultimately hoping to help, you know, keep power prices lower long-term.
How long would be your contract?
It's 35 years.
35 years you'd have solar there?
Yes, sir. And at the end of that 35 years, we have a decommissioning period where we would come in and remove the entire solar array and return it back to, you know, the way that it is currently. So it would only be, I mean, 35 years, but at the end, it would be removed.
My main concern is just the, the spot where it's at. It's just on the main road, just right near all the, all the property around it is probably, the value is probably gonna go down if you got a solar farm sitting next to it. That's my main concern.
Yeah, I can understand that concern. I mean, I don't think that it would have a negative impact on the property value personally, but, you know, inside of the report that you guys provided, there were a lot of different, you know, recommendations that if you were to approve, these would be the recommendations, and we're more than happy to comply with every single one of those. All of those would fit within our plan and then, you know, ultimately being able to continue paying taxes on that property for the next 35 years as well, I think would benefit.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor? Anyone here in opposition?
Danielle, what was the initials on their proposed site plan? What was the setback shown there? I'm just looking at the condition.
They're showing a minimum of 50 feet adjacent to the residential properties. It's either obviously larger where the creek and the floodplain are at the southern end of the site. But they're, they're saying a minimum of 50 where it's adjacent to the residential properties.
What about from Columbia Road? About three. See the conditions shown 200 feet from center line?
Right. So they've got the, the access right up here is 20 feet to give you an idea of the scale. Probably looking at around 40 feet.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Donald Taylor, 5669 Sunberry Loop, Bartram Trail subdivision. I'm opposed to this. I'm grateful that the commission is, or the planning staff is recommending a disapproval of it as well. I agree that property values will go down as Mr. Stee stated. If we do this, this is a residential area and it looks like we're trying to convert it to industrial. And I'm opposed to that because I do think it will impact the, the area as well as residents that live around it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member would like to speak in opposition? Come forward and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good evening. Patrick Duncan, 755 Whitney Shoals. So I will say this isn't necessarily in opposition to the proposal itself. More just wanted to bring some awareness to the county for any, any critical infrastructure-related projects that the county considers. For this in particular, ultimately, Department of Energy has done some investigations where they have identified security threats posed by undocumented components that were made from China, Chinese companies, specifically some solar power inverters and batteries where there was undocumented communication devices in some of these that would enable an end user to bypass, in this case, Georgia Power's in-place firewalls and allow an end user to manipulate, degrade, or shut off these devices. So really just coming with some recommendations for any critical infrastructure developments the county considered is just mandating that any of the developers ensure that any of the components that they procure throughout the lifecycle are, are only procured from U.S.-approved manufacturers to include for any long-term maintenance. And then recommend also putting in some kind of verbiage in there to make sure that the developer is held responsible if there is any damage or degradation that would be a cost to the Georgia Power or the county in the event that they did not adhere to that sourcing mandate and did end up causing some damage or destruction that would cost the county or Georgia Power. Cost.
So there is proof, you're saying, that this does exist?
Yes, as early as, as recent as just last May, they just identified some, some undocumented devices, specifically in solar power inverters that would enable remote access. And this is a case for, I think, across the board in critical infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sylvia Elam, 4442 Oak Road. I have one question and I'm sorry I didn't catch your name. What temperature-wise, we've got the green space there kind of keeping the light cool. What does the solar powers do to the surrounding temperature? Right. Because my concern is, again, you're removing all these trees. You know, and if you're one that follows global warming, particularly I don't, but we've got some oxygen being produced there. We've got a temperature maintenance there. You remove all those trees. Now, if that's gonna rise the temper, raise the temperature around that area. You know, and again, I think this area has paid enough money to Georgia Power for those loose last two nuclear plants that if we can't get enough power from nuclear, I doubt the sun's gonna help us that far away. The other thing that concerns me are those homes. Those homes, it's not like it's mine, just a little ranch on a cement slab. Those are some pretty tall homes and your 50-foot or whatever hundred feet you put back there. That's gonna be a lovely view from your home when you look out and you see that little gem turn like a, you know, like a little sunflower and it's suddenly sparkling at you. I have driven past one of these several times heading towards Ren's, heading towards Louisville. And there's a huge field of them. And there's absolutely nothing attractive about it, nothing wonderful about it. And if it's just supplying energy, well, I'm just gonna have to go with the nuclear. They can all, they've got enough room out there for one more tower and I think we'll be okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Paige Rivera, R.I.V.E.R.A., 2102 Father Gill Drive. We're a Bartram Trail residence. My husband Jose and I built in there in 2010. Our two college-age boys and us have enjoyed that neighborhood and that area for all the reasons that your planning commission stated. Their opening, we bought out there because we wanted, we knew the plan was for it to be a residential area. We're excited about the sports complex that's planned for that across from Patriots Park. We're excited. I'm friends with the dentist who just built the dental practice right next door to that, the pet grooming place, the daycare. Those are the types of businesses that we wanted out there. Whoever mentioned the green space, that Ms. Elam, I believe, again, the county spent money and we all, Bartram Trail contributed some property to that, to that, to the walking trail, the, the green space. It's beautiful and that's why we all wanted to live out there. And Ms. Elam is correct, there's a part of Bartram Trail, Sotola Ridge, that sits very high up and it will have a beautiful view of that solar farm. It's just not what we envisioned for that area out there. And I would ask that, even with the recommendations, I don't think that they'll do enough to to fix the, the, the problems that I already had with it and many of the other problems that, that have been brought up tonight. Even with the setbacks and even with the, you know, the additional buffers. We were excited about what was gonna be there. So, you know, we just would recommend or request that it be just disapproved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take one more speaker in opposition.
My name is Danielle Abel, 114 Grindel Shoals, Grove Town. The street I live on is part of Patriots Ridge, right, part of Ivy Falls. Live on the south side where there's a creek that runs through this property. I have a petition here from my neighbors that are against for several reasons, which on just a couple. One, obviously, able to sell our homes with a solar farm there if we there's that do buy. The creek is also a very quiet area. If they were to do this, we're worried about runoff from all those trees being gone. That creek goes into a pond that's in Ivy Falls. Lots of ducks and all types of other animals. Right now, it is currently still damaged from the hurricane with several sound that we are concerned that as it keeps going that way, there is gonna be flooding issues in that area. We are concerned about the hazardous materials because there are some hazardous materials standing from upkeep of solar panels and how that will affect the water in our area. We're also concerned, we just had a major hurricane around here less than a year ago. We all saw how bad that damaged this area. Most of my life, that's the only one I've ever seen here, but it could happen again. Will the solar panels become a projectile to the houses in that neighborhood? Or the several neighborhoods that are in that area. My understanding is part of this property that's behind the house is kind of slanted. How is that sun hitting them? How is that sun going to affect those homes? Our power prices are already crazy. How is that gonna affect our power and how more our powers wanna go up from from the heat from them? So also just the eyesore of, because there's gonna have to be protection around that, so there's gonna be fencing that goes around it. So it's a residential area. It's not gonna be very pretty to look at. The noise that it will affect, we'll be able to Columbia County, the Columbia Road right there, it's very quiet in these neighborhoods back here. We're gonna hear more of the Columbia Road, because we all know Columbia Road has gotten busier. So there's several different concerns that our neighborhood does have. We know that eventually something is going to probably go in that area. Another option. Because it is a residential area and we would like to keep it as quiet as, as we can for everybody that lives there. It's very quiet. Like we like, everybody's outside and wants to be outside when all what you have to look at is a solar farm.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Need to come forward if you want to speak.
One of the opponents mentioned that they would like it to be residential. It's already zoned commercial. So I can start and put commercial and nobody's going to stop it because it does not require. Number two, the other person mentioned that there are trees right now and trees would be chopped down. The trees were chopped down about 15 years ago. There are no trees. It's all that, there is wild growth from the rain. And number three, I don't know how much these ladies have invested in the neighborhood. About over a $10 million investment in Ivy Falls. I should be more worried about the value of my investments in my properties. I own the two strip centers, one I built in 2005, the other I built in 2007. And I still own 3.4 acres right next to it, which is eventually going to be developed, but given all these headaches and all these bureaucratic procedures they have to go through, I've pretty much given up on it. And that's why I want to sell it and get out. And I don't believe that putting a solar farm would be environmentally detrimental. I think somebody has to probably read and do their homework before they claim that a solar farm is going to be detrimental to the clean environment. I have never seen, never heard, or never read it anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then, just to address a few of the other comments that I heard, the Department of Energy and the Chinese components portion. That is something that we're already planning against. We have U.S.-made components for the inverters and the important infrastructure components of the solar array. That should already be in the plan that you'll be able to see. As far as being able to see it, you know, our goal is to put a buffer, not only just a buffer in space, but also, you know, trees, foliage and stuff around it to actually block the view of it and to make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible and to make it to where you cannot view it from both the road and from the neighborhood. So there would still be a, a good portion of the trees and stuff that are there. So I think that it would probably look relatively the same from the views of the back of the neighborhood because we don't plan to come inside of that. And we're happy to have that as part of our plan, just to ensure that. And there's not gonna be any hazardous materials used to clean the solar panels. It's typically just soap and water, you know, traditional soap and water. And there's very little traffic that will be there as well. So I mean, it's just maintenance. You know, you might see them two or three times a year, so it's not gonna be a heavily trafficked site. You know, everything is monitored via the internet. And all of the panels that we will be using are non-reflective, so some of the older solar systems that you would have seen, you know, reflecting light and stuff like that. These are all non-reflective panels, so you would not have that same glare or, you know, heat sent in any, you know, direction. All of that is part of our plan that you can see there. And, yeah, that, just, those are the other ones I wanted to clear up.
What's the height of the unit with the panel and the pole, everything, from ground level?
From the pole is five feet. We would plan to have.
Wouldn't take much to cover.
Right, yeah, it's not. Right, yeah, it's not.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of file RZ two-five-dash-oh-six-oh-six rezoning map, zero-six-one parcels two-one-four, zero-two-one-four-one from PUD to S-one-four proposed solar farm.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of disapproval? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do I have any legal matters tonight?
Not tonight.
Or commissioner comments? Staff comments? Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.